All right. We will call the meeting of the City Council of Oregon and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council present. And if you will stand, Malcolm Barnes from Boy Scout Troop 601 is going to post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Give Malcolm a hand. He volunteered to do this thing.[62.12][62.12](APPLAUSE). He didn't have any fellow scouts here with him to help him, so he volunteered to do it himself. Good job, Malcolm. You can come back and do it anytime you want to do it.
All by himself.
Yep. All by himself. All right, I've got some proclamations I need to come down there and read, I guess. All right. This first proclamation says that whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work to keep our city, state, nation working effectively. And whereas public servants take not only jobs but oaths to protect and serve. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, public works employees, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of Missouri City, the United States, and around the world. Whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, building inspectors, food inspectors, parks and recreation professionals, nurses and safety inspectors, computer technicians, and countless other occupations, maybe even city council. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services our community demands of their government with quality, efficiency, responsiveness, and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that May 4th through the 10th, 2014, is Public Service Recognition Week. Therefore, I encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. You're going to accept this? The city manager is going to accept this on behalf of the city employees and all of our public servants?
In fact, Mayor, while you are... Oh.
You can say something. I'll let you talk.
Yeah, we usually are back there making sure he has everything versus coming up here and saying anything, so I don't know if to take it from him or not. Mayor, thank you. And it is one where the mayor and the council, our public servants, as are all of us, from myself on down, we are here and we are proud to be able to serve the public and be here to really make sure that your lives and your quality of life is the best that you can have. One of the things that we've done recently is gone through and kind of asked ourselves six serious questions about what do we do here as the organization? What do we do as public servants? The first question is, why do we exist? And we exist to make as far as a better place for our stakeholders. That's what we come in every day to do, whether it be the person who mows the parks, whether it be the guys who are out there working on the streets and sidewalks, whether it be the police officer patrolling your neighborhood, or the firefighter fighting the fire that's in your house. It is one where we are here in order to make your world a better place, and it's one where it is our pleasure to be able to serve you. And so with that, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite all of our city employees forward to join us in a picture.
Come on up, guys. Don't be bashful.
Joby, that includes you.
Yeah, Joby. Wes, that includes you as well. Everybody, come on up.[295.52][295.52](APPLAUSE). I didn't leave anybody in the room.
Who's minding the shop? Who's minding the shop?
I don't know. Obviously, all these people have been coming here for a meeting.
We're here. We're in supportive role.
What? Yeah. There's any employee, are you not?
Two guys, too.
Aren't you Maria?
Yeah, Maria, they've got the recorder going on, so you can...
Maria can handle that recorder from afar. Did I leave anybody out? We got anybody in the TV room? Wait a minute. You're an employee. Look at here. See? Come on up here.
Well, you can take a professional one if you want.
Yeah, come on, Cory. Let's go.
It's a PhD camera thing.
We'll get everybody up here in a minute. You can get up from the chair. You don't have to sit in the back back there to take that picture with your phone. Come up here.
Is this a good idea?
Wait a minute. Oh, we got one more. We got one more. Yeah. Run, Al. Come on, Al, get in here. Okay, here you go. Huh? What is this about?
Y'all gonna let Al take a picture with y'all?
Yeah, we were talking about you.
Yeah, y'all gonna let him take a picture with y'all?
You got it?
Got it. Everybody's nice inside. All right, one, two, three. All right, we're gonna take obviously several. One, two. One more. One, two, three.
Oh, he's done this before. He's done this before, yeah. Good.
I think y'all should have done selfies.
I think so. Lot going on right now. This next proclamation says that whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 99 sworn members of the Missouri City Police Department, some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made that ultimate sacrifice and were killed in the line of duty. The names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in Washington, D.C. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored, and the names of the officers newly engraved on the memorial will be formally dedicated during National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 25th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of Sunday, May 12th, 2014. And whereas here in Missouri City, our city police department's annual police officers' memorial ceremony will be held May 14th, 2014, at 7:00 PM and is part of the National Police Week. And whereas May 14th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day with federal law PL-103-322, directing that all flags be blown at half-staff on that date in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby call patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2014 as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observance in which all citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsiveness have rendered and dedicated service to our communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all of our citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Missouri City to observe May 14th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our community or have become disabled in the performance of duties, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all of our fallen heroes. Chief, you all are coming up?
Say anything?
No, sir, other than we appreciate the support of our citizens and our council. I've been here quarter of a century, and it's always been unwavering, so it continues. Thank you.
Yes. Please, if you're available that evening on the 14th, come to the police office, to the police station down there as we observe this formally and read some proclamations and do our vigil. All right, this last proclamation, it says, whereas our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in terms, in times of natural disaster, gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect, to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes. And whereas building safety, maximizing resilience, minimizing risk, it's a long theme, is a theme for Building Safety Month 2014. It encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2014 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and the citizens of Missouri City do proclaim the month of May 2014 as Building Safety Month in the city of Missouri City. Who's coming to get this? Dale? Come on up. You want to say something there? Not really. We'll let Gary say something.
I'll try to be as brief as mine. While this team is seen by many of our citizens on an individual basis, as a group, hardly seen as the group that out in front protects us with building safety, the inspections, the plan review, the permitting, and we're missing somebody. Tammy? Join us.
Yeah, they're high.
This is our permits and inspection team.
Come on up here. You can come up closer.
Okay.
Should I have a microphone in or what? Oh, okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Give me a stiff. Too much grease? Shorter one or a stiff one, I don't know which.
Every different kind. All right, who's got the check? Bill's got the check. Show us the money, Bill. First, tell them what it is.
City Council, Mayor, City Manager, about three years ago, the city decided to upgrade the air conditioning systems at City Hall and Community Center over the state-of-the-art control systems for the air handlers. And at that time, the city entered into an agreement with the CenterPoint, City Smart Program, and we have a photographer here who's going to present the check.
You did a good job.
Mr. Wu was with clear results, and he'd like to present the check to the city for the results from a measurement and verification of the system. And with that, do come forward.
Thank you, Bill. I'll bring that check up in just a moment. Again, my name is Fred Wu. I'm a program manager with the CenterPoint Energy City Smart Program. CenterPoint is very excited to offer this program for its local government, municipal, and county government customers. The program is fully intended to help you identify and develop energy efficiency opportunities. Part of the services that are available besides some technical assistance from our program is a financial incentive, so that's really what we're here to present tonight. As Mr. Cronin said, this check tonight that we're presenting is for the City Hall renovation project that was completed. The project has been estimated to save over 630,000 kilowatt hours per year. That's approximately 40% of the baseline energy consumption that we looked at. That's enough electricity to power approximately 60 homes for the year, and is also equivalent to the annual carbon dioxide emissions from over 90 passenger vehicles or over 1 million miles driven on those same vehicles. So, very good work. Thank you all very much for participating in the program. Thanks to the entire facilities team for making sure this project happened. It certainly wasn't the easiest thing for them to work with the program to quantify the savings on, but that was the challenge, and you all succeeded admirably. So with that, I'd love to bring this check up from CenterPoint Energy, and the check tonight is for $23,401, and that's really for you guys to save on your electric bills here at City Hall. So hopefully, it'll be a win year over year for y'all on that.
We do that every year?
Not the check, but the bill, yes.
Shoot, man.
Almost got me. That's the photographer. You almost got me on that one.
Yeah. I want that much every year. We're saving that much every year, right?
We'd love to invite you up, Mr. Mayor, and any City Council members would like to be in this picture with us, but you've got the check from CenterPoint.
I'll tell you what, come back here, and we'll all stand up.
That's a great idea.
We all have to come. Yeah, stand up, council. Yeah. Come back here, and we'll be right behind you.
As long as we're out of your way.
Yeah. Come on in here. Lower for him. Might put him on a stool if not, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Spend it wisely here. Great program, and thanks to CenterPoint, you know, for asking us to participate and making it available. Wes likes checks, right, Wes?
Yes, sir.
That's why you're up here?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Wes is up here because it's now... Not yet. Wes, I'm not ready for you. Sit down. We have public comments.
He's ready to go.
I will call you when it's your turn. You're under staff reports. I do have a couple of people who would like to address council, so first of all, let me invite Robert Robinson up and ask that Robert just state your name and address and tell us what you're here for, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Robert Robinson, 2103 Peachwood, 28-year resident at that residence, District B. And I'm here in two, like a two-phase. First phase being, on last Monday morning, I, along with two other of my neighbors, one on my street and one two street, well, three streets over, were victimized by a group of thieves that came through the night, stole four, four tires and rims off of Chevy Silverado Texas Edition trucks. It was organized and carried out in like a stealth-like mode. This is something that, you know, just shook my confidence and my security at my house. Like I said, I've been there 28 years, and I've never had anything like that to affect me or my family so close. And we're talking, my vehicle was in my driveway, it went two cars deep to get my vehicle. My neighbor's the same way, and took four, I mean, complete set of tires and wheels off of the vehicles and got away with, okay, without tripping any alarms or anything. And there, I don't want to say too much, but there's the video showing, showing people, and they moved around just as, just like they were invited guests. My neighbors have been so wonderful to me, you know, you never know until something happens and your neighbors all come and trying to give me support and stuff like that for the loss, stuff like that, and we consulting each other and stuff. And I just feel compelled that I had to come and bring this out, that issue, but bring out the issue about the Missouri City Police officers that I came in close contact with that came down to in my time of need, that when I was not thinking real straight, that had a clear head, a clear focus and stuff like that, which to me only represents a backing that they have from this council and, and just that they had the authority to do whatever they need to do to try to come here. But this was a, for myself, my, it was a 2,800, well, I have the bill here, $3,700 repair for my vehicle. So you have, and this, all three of these happened the same time, same night, so it was organized.
Yeah. Sure sounds like it.
And like I said, there's, I'm going to mention Officer Michael Zimmer, who's the person that gave, gave me his card for, is the contact person, but if anyone else is any, it's not that I'm trying to leave you out, but it's just, I'm just every citizen, okay? And I want to thank Missouri City Police and the council, Mayor, Council, and everybody here.
Mr. Robinson, thank you for coming up here and making that comment, because, you know, these guys don't hear it all the time. And they need to. And the citizens like yourself who benefited from that need to tell them more, and I appreciate you coming. I hate that it happened to you. We don't like to see that happen in this city to anybody. And chances are, people that did that don't even live in this city. Came here from another place. But let me tell you what, see these guys back here? They will catch them. You come to Missouri City, you're going to do the time, and they will catch them in time. I mean, I get your tires back. These guys will catch whoever's doing that, and they will, they'll be punished for it. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'll give you a call.
Me bet. Thank you. All right, Frank Hester.
Mayor and City Council, I've come to you tonight. I live at 4407 Shady River in Missouri City, Texas. Moved to Missouri City in October of 2002 and started attending council meetings in 2003. Now, I'm here tonight just to make a few comments, if I can, about a man that I sat next to for many years. That's Ron Lee. Ron meant a lot to me, and I've worked with him on many occasions, on many things, including working on election days, working on tourist boards, but Ron Lee meant a lot to this city. And I'd just like to say that Ron will be greatly missed by me, and I know by you, and many people in this city, because Ron was a man of character. My, Matt Ron was a man who appreciated what he, the city was doing. He took the extra time and effort to do the things that needed to be done, and I'm going to miss Ron Lee, but I just wanted to say I wish condolences to his family and his loved ones, and thank you for the opportunity to do this.
No, thank you, Frank, and that's, you're absolutely right. We're all going to miss Ron and his service to the city and to the citizens of Missouri City, and you can't replace people like that. You can find people to serve, but you can't replace people like that, and we do, we owe gratitude to Gwen and the family, the son and the daughter, for allowing us to have him, you know, for every council meeting, for every P&amp;Z meeting, every tourist meeting, because up until Ron got sick three months ago, I doubt he missed more than what I have on my hand in meetings. He was that dedicated, so I do hope that people remember what he did. I know I do, and I know other councils can speak to their own, but yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think we're all going to miss Ron very much. It's not, you know, not seeing him sit right there is hard enough. It's kind of like flying the empty, you know, riding the empty horse. That's what's going to be right there, Frank, so thank you for those comments, so. Anyone else want to make a comment? Again, I mean...
If we're public, we can't do that.
Yeah. We'd allow you to do that in this case, in response to his.
I'm sure we're going to do some sort of recognition as a council.
Yeah, we'll do some recognition, so. And I think prayers need to be with Gwen. For people that don't realize this, Gwen has been very ill herself for the last two and a half years and has not been able to even leave their home, was not even able to go to the service because of that, and I know that was very hard on her and the family not to do that. So our thoughts and prayers are with Gwen and, and the daughter and the son and the grandkids, so thank you. All right. I didn't have anyone else to speak from the, now. Mr. Belli, it's your turn. Staff report the presentation of the quarterly investment report. I know we're all going to listen, you know, we're going to listen very attentively at this.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the presentation of the quarterly investment report for the periods of January, February, March, recently completed. Investment report is submitted as part of our investment policy and strategy to indicate the investment balances at a certain point in time in the prior quarters and years. Our portfolio summary is presented as this pie chart in which the majority of it is 66% in blue there. That's the, is held by agency notes. The green is intergovernmental, local governmental pools, investment pools, 30%, and CDs and bank deposits are 4%. This chart just shows the diversity over the last five quarters in which the, any changes, the purple being the one that changes the most, and that's in our investment pools, and that actually represents, has represented the changes from property taxes. A balance comparison between last, the ending of last quarter and this quarter, you'll see is $11 million that's generated by property tax collections in January and February mainly, and then also that we purchased five and a half, four and a half million dollars' worth of some agency notes. This chart is, shows the agency yields over time for six periods, six quarters, and it shows going from 3% down to 2.4, up to 2.7, 2.8, 2.65, and currently at 2.043%. Trying to find some places to put it to make it earn some money. This is a yield trend chart in which it shows that's our yield agency, or the agency yield is in green, that line way above, and our benchmarks and the T-bill rates and the pool rates are all there at the bottom there, gathering dust, so to speak. This is a maturity schedule which shows we're, we have 34% of our total portfolio is a one-day liquidity, and then we have over 365 days, we have 59%. Most of that is those agency notes, which they pay out on a, on a monthly basis, actually. They pay down.
Wes, do we know how residential values, if they're trending upwardly from last year to contribute to this tax increase?
Well, this is, this is investments, but certainly...
I'm not sure.
This won't affect this.
No.
The property tax income is a different piece, and this is investment only.
And the property taxes that I did allude to, of course, are from the previous year.
Previous year, right. Okay.
Exactly.
All right. But I would like to know that.
Okay, I can get you that. This is just outlook for...
In addition to that, excuse me for interrupting you. In addition to that, excuse me for interrupting you and chalk it up to me. Kinda curious about this. When we do get their report, I'd like to know it, get it segmented, uh, in certain subdivisions. Would that be too much? So, for... I'd just like to see what the trend of property values in Missouri City is compared to what it was last year. Because we know, we talked, had a great deal of language concerning values going, that was two years ago.
That was in the Chronicle this weekend, by subdivision. Did you see that?
No, I didn't.
Yeah. It was in the, it was, it's, it's in the paper. It's a good comparison of subdivisions.
In Missouri City?
Oh, yeah. Shows every subdivision in Missouri City.
Was it good?
Yeah, I, you know, every subdivision with the exception of one, had an increase. And I, I think I sent you all an email.
Yes, you did.
I, I got my, I got my tax appraisal in the mail Friday and my house went up twenty-one percent.
I still have that paper down.
Yeah. So, but I, yeah, I, there's only one subdivision, uh...
If it's a positive thing, it, I think it should be put out there.
Yeah, it was positive.
Yeah.
Of course, we're just, we're just now receiving those certified, those preliminary certified values, so that's, you know, until those become, uh, which...
I, I won't interrupt you.
That's all right. Just finally, that, that, uh, our, our performance in our investment, uh, strategies is two thousand basis points above the, our benchmark. And our benchmark is the, uh, ninety-day T-bill. So it's, uh, we're at least above that, way above that. And of course, just the changes in the, uh, economy and the investment, uh, model is that, uh, the Federal Reserve has started to retreat on its quantitative easing, meaning it's starting to not buy as much, uh, debt. And therefore, everybody's starting to buy treasuries and getting away from, from the stock market. And that's all I have.
We need to buy gold.
This is not our, our investment policy.
I know. Could buy, we'd have bought gold ten years ago, we'd be flush, baby. Thank you. Any questions, Wes? Very good. All right, item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda is printed.
Move to approve.
Second. Councilman Wynn made the motion, Councilman Allen Cat made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A is zoning public hearing, seven A one.
And ordinance in the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending specific use permit number one forty-two, authorizing the use of a twenty-one point eleven acre tract of land in the city of Missouri City as a specific use places of assembly, describing said twenty-one point eleven acre tract of land, providing limitations, restrictions and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as amended by ordinance number oh eighty-one-one adopted on January nineteen nineteen eighty-one as amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the second and final reading.
The first... Yes, the second and final reading.
The first reading was held quite a while ago, so if council wants a refresher, um, we can do that as well. But this is a request by the church, Sienna Catherine, or Saint Catherine of Sienna, um, on Sienna Parkway. Uh, came to you in June of last year. And the request is to amend the sign regulations that are contained in the SUP ordinance and essentially default to the city's current, uh, sign ordinance. And there were some questions raised at the time concerning the lid property within the S, within the boundaries of the SUP. Um, the church has continued to work with, uh, the lid over the last year in terms of the placement and technical standards for any signs that are placed within, um, the lid's property. And so the lid has provided no objections and have also given them permission. In fact, um, the very first sign has been placed within their driveway, um, in accordance with the current, uh, SUP regulations and, uh, the lid's technical standards. And so, uh, the church has provided a picture of that if, if anyone, um, has not driven by in the last couple of weeks to see that sign. But this is just to complete the ordinance. You can see it, it, it is in the driveway.
Behind the levy.
The levy. So, but it does conform to the current SUP, um, requirements, but they are still requesting to, um, default to our, our city ordinance.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Allen Cat made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you guys. Looks good, by the way. Guys, looks very nice. All right, uh, there are no public hearings, uh, item eight are appointments, there are no appointments at this time. Item nine are authorizations. Nine A is to consider authorizing the mayor to execute a water supply contract with the Gulf Coast Water Authority. I assume all we're doing is renewing what we already have, is that not right?
That's correct, sir. We've been working over the past course of the year to, uh, to finalize a new agreement. And so, uh, we're here today to present that agreement over that time. Also have with me Ivan Langford, he's the, uh, General Manager of Gulf Coast Water Authority.
Mr. Water, yeah, that's Mr. Water back there.
Mr. Water back there, yes. And this will provide surface...
Is there a motion?
I'll move to the second.
Councilman Smith made the motion, who made the second, Councilman?
Delanda. Delanda Ford. I did.
All right, Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Allen Cat made the second. Are there any questions, discussions? If not, thank you. He's coming up.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, on behalf of Gulf Coast Water Authority. We look forward to a long and wet relationship.
We do too. Thank you. Thank you for cooperation with us, so I think our citizens realize how important water is.
By the way, uh, former city manager, I can tell you have an outstanding staff here.
Thank you. We appreciate those compliments. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll vote all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And item nine B is consider authorizing the staff to negotiate and execute an audit services agreement. Is there a recommendation from our audit committee?
The, uh, audit committee met with staff and that consists of Councilman Smith as well as Councilman Emery. Uh, our recommendation is, is that we award the contract to Whitley Penn, uh, on five years based on the fact that we just approved a new agreement to take place and that that was not a part of the RSP when they, uh, submitted and was not a requirement. And they were the second best, uh, uh, review of, of the firm. We did review the third firm, I mean, interviewed the third firm, but we recommend staying with the existing firm.
Okay, so that's your motion.
That's my motion.
I second that.
Any comments from you? We're on that audit committee, huh?
No, I think that the, um, if, I'd like to compliment my, uh, my committee members because we went into some detail with this. We, uh, we had some, uh, like, we met many times, more times than I thought we would.
Yeah.
And so I think that the final decision came out based on the, uh, the prevailing, uh, uh, rules that we had at the time we submitted, uh, re-request for, uh, for, 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 for those deals.
I'll give you credit for a second second, okay?
Thank you, okay.
As a, as a member of the commission.
Our pleasure.
Okay, you got that, Maria, we have two seconds.
Yes.
So we got the committee members in there. I want those committee people on this, they're the only ones making that motion. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Botay himself is here, if you have any comments to make. No, he doesn't, so we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Five more years of you, huh?
Well, he got to perform those five years.
That's right, there is a cancellation clause in that contract.
Do some work, it's not...
That if we don't feel comfortable with what you're doing, it ain't gonna last five years. You understand that? Okay. All right, item eleven are resolutions, there are nine. Item twelve are city council announcements.
I do have an announcement.
Yes, sir.
Among all the events that I attended in the past, uh, few weeks, uh, I'd like to mention the Police Then Fire Auxiliary Fundraising Event. I thought it was a great success and I thought the people who, uh, have been doing it year in, year out deserve appreciation and recognition for that. I mean, it took a lot of work for them to put together every year and I had a great time there.
It is, and it's an opportunity for that organization to give our police officers and firefighters some extra money for their little toys that we don't necessarily always approve in the, in the budget, so, you know.
I, uh, I commend Mr. Patterson. He was able to bilk a lot of money out of a lot of people that, uh, normally would not have given, but, uh...
I'm aware of that.
He has a heart of doing that.
Yes, I am aware of that.
He has a technique that's, that's second to none.
Yes, I have not been to the Redneck Country Club yet, but I did buy a membership there that night.
That's why I do the silent auctions.
Any other, I don't think there's any other announcements or anything. I know that all this week, most of this week, our, our citizens, I mean, our employees here are doing different things. Our appreciation this week and, uh, have different events. I know we got a barbecue, was it Friday?
Friday is the barbecue cook-off to...
Barbecue cook-off.
See who the winning team is.
Huh?
Said, come out and see who the winning team's gonna be.
The winning team is and, uh, you've got other events throughout the week. But, you know, go back to their proclamation. These people don't necessarily get the pats on the back, all of them, regardless what department they're in. Don't necessarily get the pats on the back that they so, solely deserve. Whether they're cleaning ditches out, you know, uh, doing those things that none of us really like doing, being a police officer, being a firefighter. Take time this week when you're out on the streets and you see these people, pull over and just thank them for what they do. That's the only gratitude they get. Uh, they're not the highest paid people in the world, although we try to take care of our employees. But a lot of times that pat on the back, that thank you for what you do, means more to them than a paycheck. So I encourage our citizens to do that. I encourage you to come to the, uh, police ceremony on the fourteenth. It's a very moving, uh, ceremony and I encourage you to come and support not only our police officers and, and public servants who are living, but to respond to those that, uh, have given their lives, so thank you for doing that. Any other announcements? Ed? I will say that we had a very successful fundraising golf tournament last week for our former city manager, uh, who, you know, died unexpectedly last year. And, uh, some people got together and organized a, a golf tournament and an event to raise money for Frank's children, uh, his, his, uh, two sons and daughter and to help Kelly with some of those expenses. And it was a very, very well-attended. I know you're talking about some, some expensive items, there were some real expensive items there that night. And, uh, you know, like a hunting trip that went for eighteen thousand dollars. And our golf match went for six, so, you know, yeah. So I don't know why people wanna play golf with me and the mayor Sugarland and the county judge, but it makes me no difference for six grand, they can play with anybody.
No, they wanna see all that talent.
That it, the talent? But anyway, it was a very nice event and, and I wanna thank all of those people who were sponsors, underwriters, uh, whole sponsors, golf team. There were, uh, twenty-four teams that, that paid twenty-five hundred dollars a team to play in the golf tournament. The golf tournament was given to the family free, the golf rounds were free. So the only cost that, uh, was incurred was for the meal that night. So our goal was to raise a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the family. I don't know how close we came, but gotta be pretty close.
I think it exceeded that amount I remember from.
Exceeded it. I, I would, I would think so, so. If you were there, thank you. If you weren't, we'll give you an opportunity to do something later, so thank you for remembering Frank and his family that way, so, thank you. All right, do we? We don't, no executive, oh my goodness. People, uh...
Maria, can we touch the director's phone now?